Recording in progress.
That is.
Oh.
Get down, take it down.
There we go.
There we go.
Let's check. There we go. Okay.
Wow.
Much better.
Give me a thumbs up, Mark, when we are ready there. All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, February 4th Liberty Lake City Council meeting. This is our workshop session. The mayor is going to be out tonight and I am traveling. So we do need to have a council member in chambers be nominated to run the meeting from there. Are there any nominations to do that?
I'll nominate council member Kennedy.
Second. Okay. All right. So we have motion to have council member Kennedy be the chair of the meeting in chambers. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes unanimously. Council member Kennedy, it's all yours.
All right. Very good. Can everybody hear Councilman Cargill? She might have got garbled or something like that. So.
That's just me.
Just you? Okay. Well, very good. Well, let me turn this over to Lisa.
Thank you, council members. We're here to talk about the land capacity analysis tonight. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now? All right. So we're going to be talking about the land capacity analysis tonight. I want to start off by saying, this is a draft and it will need to remain a draft for a very long time because the county commissioners are not planning on adopting the housing allocation until they go through their EIS, their environmental impact statement, which is at the end of the process. And this is foundational for everything that we do in the plan. So I have to do it. I can adjust if they change the allocation. We don't think they'll change the allocation, but it's got to remain draft until they adopt that housing allocation. So that's just, just kind of an introductory point. And in the introduction, there's actually a typo. I miscalculated the acres. I used the calculation for square feet in an acre instead of square miles. Anyhow, long story short, we're actually only 4,000.9 acres in size, but so I did want to point that out. Next slide, please. So what is the purpose of a land capacity analysis, also known as an LCA? Well, it used to be called a land quantity analysis and it was, it's always been a requirement of, of the Growth Management Act as it relates to population, demonstrating that there's adequate land available to support projected population growth. With House Bill 1120, that changed to include to be now referred to as a, as a land capacity analysis. So now we're not only looking at the capacity of land, but also if we have adequate capacity to provide housing types that are affordable to all incomes. And so that's, so, so it's a two-pronged analysis. Next slide, please. So the, the reason why we're talking about this now is because this is absolutely foundational to the entire comprehensive plan. This is our critical path. It serves as a basis for evaluation of capacity for utilities and schools. It informs our land use. It's an essential input into the network analysis and needed transportation improvements to support our future growth. It's also, it's going to inform the parks plan, the capital facilities plan. We will be, once this is adopted for planning purposes, it will be disseminated to the schools, to the utility providers, to a Vista, to PD, to Spokane Valley Fire District, et cetera. So, so that they can do their piece to say, oh, can we, can we support this level of growth? So next slide, please. So the first step in the process is to identify the projected need 2020 through 202046. And so, and it's interesting because the population is actually 2023 through 202046, but the housing is from 2020 to 202046. It doesn't really matter at the end of the day because we can demonstrate how that is addressed. So again, identifying population growth, but we also need to identify the types and number of housing units needed for all income levels. Next slide, please. So first, the population projection. Next slide, please. This is, so the county has looked at the OFM population projections for the county and they provide us with a choice of three, high, medium, and low. As part of the planning team that, that is evaluating this, we did a regression analysis and found that the middle level, 654, 665, was the appropriate level for the county. And our population allocation in that, and this has been adopted by the county commissioners, is 21,934. Next slide, please. And that, that absolutely lines up with our own regression analysis of our population. And as you can see, it looks to be that we'll be hitting the, our population allocation right around 2042. That's assuming that population growth doesn't flat now, which it probably will. Next slide, please. So next, we have to look at housing needs. And this is, the Department of Commerce actually provides us with a tool to project this. It's the, the housing, housing for all planning tool. It was developed by a consultant to kind of project based upon, based upon the current county population. Now, one of the things I have to say is that the projected housing need, and we just recently found this out. There's kind of a hidden tab within this tool that shows us that 60% of the housing need is to address future growth. 30% is intended to address cost burdened housing populations. And 10% is actually included to address homeless populations. So, so it's a bigger projection than what we expect in terms of population, but, and it's applied to everyone. This housing allocation tool then takes what's allocated to the county by Commerce and breaks down the allocation by community. So this is, this is what came out of that tool. Our housing allocation, the demand that we have in between 2020 and 2046, we're looking at 3,500 and change housing units to support the 0 to 80% population. 613 that would support the 80 to 120% of the area median income and a little bit more than 1,100 for those that are over 120% of the average median income. It also identified the emergency housing beds, and we talked about that a little bit with the, with the emergency housing piece. So our allocated share in 2046 of homes, beds for homeless populations is 227. Next slide, please. So now, we're not expected to build necessarily the affordable housing. What we're being asked to do is to demonstrate that we have zoning that allows for the types of housing that are assumed to be affordable. And also later in the process, and we're actually going to be doing this with the planning commission, actually looking at some of the barriers to affordability with our housing. So that's the second piece of it. But the first piece is just, does your zoning allow it? Do you have enough available lands that are zoned appropriately? So these are, these are the housing types that are considered. So detached, single-family homes are assumed to be affordable only to the higher income range, greater than 120% of AMI. Moderate density, townhomes duplexes, triplexes and quad and fourplexes are assumed to be affordable to the moderate income level, 80 to 120%. Now, we have a little bit of a challenge here because we have actually a fair number of townhomes, but there's zero lot line. And so the assessors' records count them as single-family homes. So we can't differentiate between the two. So we've kind of, we have consolidated some of the income categories for the purposes of this analysis. But duplexes, triplexes and fourplexes, we absolutely can identify. Low-rise multifamily, which are walk-up apartments, condominiums, two to three floors. They're assumed to be affordable for 0 to 80% of the area median income plus permanent supportive housing. But I want to say that, that it's not affordable for anything lower than 50% without subsidy. But again, that's not the question that we're being asked at this moment. So, and then ADUs are assumed to be affordable for the 50 to 80% of AMI. So next slide, please. So now that we have identified the need, both in terms of, in terms of housing, we also need to identify capacity. And this, the capacity is made up of four different categories. As I told you, the, the projected housing need is from 2020 to 2046. So the first thing we have to do is account for all the housing by housing type that has been constructed in Liberty Lake since 2020. Next, and there is a cutoff on that, and I believe it was August of 2023 because that's when we started to really crunch the numbers on this. And that, the next piece is entitled projects. And when, when I talk about entitled projects, entitled projects are those that have some level of approval, are already permitted and under construction, but have not yet finalled. We don't count a new unit until they, we actually issue the certificate of occupancy. The next category are the remaining vacant and residential and mixed-use properties. And there's not a lot left in the city. And then, so then we need to figure out what the capacity is there. And lastly, are underutilized residential and mixed-use properties. Next slide, please. So what are we excluding from this capacity analysis? Public and private right-of-way, open space tracks that are owned by homeowners associations, public facilities, utility easements and corridors, and critical areas. So critical areas are like wetlands. If riparian buffer areas, 30% slope. So we know that some of the developments in the city have some pretty significant slopes that are, that are a hindrance to development. So we get to exclude all of those. Next slide, please. So the first category, housing units constructed from 2020 to August of 2024. We've constructed a total of 902 units. So that's, that's pretty impressive, actually. 705 of those are single-family or townhomes. 28, 28 of them are duplexes, triplexes or fourplexes. 168 are multifamily condos or institutional, and they're really just multifamily or condos. And we did have one manufactured home. No ADUs. Next slide, please. So here are, here are the areas of entitled. So an entitled would include, so entitled are like all those platted areas, they're final-platted, but this, we still have a vacant lot that hasn't developed yet. We get to count all those. The, the preliminary plaits that have been approved and the portion that has not yet been platted would be considered entitled. When we, when a preliminary plat is approved, it's approved for a certain number of units and a certain type of housing, et cetera. So we can, we can look at what the entitlement is on that. It also includes binding site plans that, particularly the mixed-use binding site plans, the, the residential portion of those. So that includes like the south side of country, the Country Vista, BSP, Stanley Apartments, Liberty Heights Apartments, which were formerly Jake's Townhomes. Those are all entitled. That they're in various stages of permitting, but they haven't been built yet, but we know how many units. Yes.
So, okay, a minute ago, you said entitled properties are already permitted?
They can be already permitted. So we have an example here. It would be, you'll see over south of Huntwood on the eastern side of the Meadowwood Technology Campus, that green blob, that's Signal Point Apartments. Those are already permitted and under constructed, under construction. They haven't been finalled. They had their, and actually, they weren't even that far. They were in process for permitting. At the time, we kind of wrapped this up. So, but they're, but they still count as being entitled. So, so that's, this is a map of kind of your entitled projects. As you know, Hawkstone, fifth edition, just final-platted, but those homes still haven't been, haven't been built. We have one or two more phases in Legacy Ridge West. We have probably a couple more phases in River Crossing East and River Crossing 2020, as well as Trutina. So, so yeah, so we still have, we still have a lot going on there. Next slide, please. So for entitled homes, housing units, we have a total of 4,200 that are entitled. That's, I mean, that takes us a long way towards what, where we need to get, get. 732 of them are single-family or town, townhomes. 242 of them are duplexes, triplexes or, or fourplexes. 3,243 are multifamily or condos. We don't have any manufactured homes or ADUs in this category. But that's, so we've got a substantial amount of entitled. In fact, that probably encompasses the vast majority of what's left to be developed. Next slide, please. And then we looked at the vacant residential or mixed use. And so we've got the 35 acres that the school district is intending to surplus over on our western boundary, once they finish cleaning up the gun club. That is an R2 zone. We have several, what we considered vacant in the Meadowwood Tech Campus. If it had, if it was, if there was no building on it, we counted it as vacant. It's, there, there's parking lots on some of it, but, but if there was no building, it was considered vacant. We have a few in the river district, all under the same ownership that are to the west of Bitterroot Apartments and just south of the Courtyard East Apartments. And, and I'm, I'm assuming that those are going to, they're likely to be there in the RDM zone. They're likely to be developed as multifamily as well, just because it's consistent with what's in the neighborhood. We also included the, the two parcels in Toledo Station. Well, that is RDC. So River District Commercial, Freeway Commercial. In the River District, multifamily is allowed in there. And from discussions with the property owner, there is the potential for a portion of that to be, not a large portion, we, we assume 10%, but a portion of that to be multifamily residential. So that, so.
Two and three?
That's two and three. That's correct. And then over on the eastern boundary of the city, we have some properties that are pretty significantly challenged with, by topography. There's a lot of 30% slope over there. We do have someone who is in the pre-development stages on parcel 13 for another Belalago Phase 2. They're going to have to go through, they're going to have to jump through some hoops related to reasonable use demonstration. But they're looking at potentially developing like 20 units on that site in two phases. And the property to the north has similar, similar to topographic issues. So we assumed that that could potentially be, be developed in this, at the same density as the one to the south. And, but that's, I mean, that's 30 lots. It's, it's a drop in the bucket.
But Lisa, was there some concern about fire trucks getting in there?
So, so that all has to be vetted through the, through the development process. Obviously Spokane Valley Fire District is working with us and doing the reviews. That's part of what we have to look at as part of the, the reasonable use assessment. They are going to have a little bit of impact on 30% slopes, but they may, but they, but they're trying to minimize that. So we just have to see if they can address the standards for development or not. So right now, it's not known, but again, it's in process. So we're not treating it as, we're not treating it as entitled. We're just treating it as a potential. So that's what we have left in terms of potentially developable residential. Not a lot, right? And so for the vacant residential and mixed use, and also we did this, the same for the underutilized, couple of things that we did. So we actually hand calculated this. We kind of assumed the, the lowest or the, the lowest category of affordability that was allowed in the zone and the density that was allowed in the zone, we, we subtracted out of, assumed 15% for like infrastructure, roadways, et cetera. And, and we basically looked at the zoning code to say, so how much of this could be developed? So each of them was really hand calculated. For parcels two and three, out of 90 acres, 11 acres is encumbered with overhead utility and gas easements. So they're, so that's going to, they're, they're pretty challenged there to begin with, and we assumed a 10% there. But for all of these vacant residential and mixed use, the methodology that was adopted by Spokane County required us to incorporate what they call a market factor. And it's 30%. The market factor is whatever is not going to develop because the market's not ready for it to develop, kind of thing. And that's, the Spokane County has used that market factor for a number of years. It's high. And, but it's, at this point, it's such a small number of parcels that it doesn't really affect us very much anyhow. And given some of the challenges on some of those properties, it, it may not be unreasonable. But regardless, that's the methodology that was adopted and we're being consistent with the methodology. So, next slide, please. So this is the, the total of the vacant residential mixed-use capacity analysis. And after we deduct the market factor of 30%, we're looking at, at a potential of 636 units on the vacant residential and mixed-use properties. And of that, 21 would be single-family or townhome, 361 are duplexes, triplexes or fourplexes, and 254 could be multifamily or condos. So it's not a big number. It's, it's not a big number at all. But again, it's part of what we have to do is, in this capacity analysis. Next slide, please. Last piece, we had underutilized mixed-use properties. And really, the only ones that, that we identified were in the Meadowwood Tech Campus. And so we looked at, again, we looked at each of these parcels and we, we hand calculated, okay, this is the area with the building. This is how much they need for the parking for the existing building. This is how much is left to be developed. And based upon the developer agreement that happened at the time of rezoning, some of them had to be vertically mixed-use buildings and others had to, could have been apartments. So for those that could be apartments, we did it based upon what the average density we saw with the signal point, which is right around 18 units per acre. For the, for the vertically mixed use, right now, the code says it has to be one-to-one, one foot to one foot, so, so one-to-one, commercial to residential. So we assumed that these were two-story buildings. We looked at the maximum building capacity or, or coverage capacity for the zone. And we assumed the first floor to be all commercial because that's what the development agreement said. And the second floor to be all residential, and we assumed 2,000 square feet per apartment, which would also allow for internal circulation, et cetera. So that's how we got to these numbers. Next slide, please. And so we're looking at the potential for 173 multifamily or condo units in Meadowwood Technology Campus and the underutilized pieces. And again, we did apply a market factor here as well. Next slide, please. So now that we know how much housing we have overall, we need to compare need to capacity. So looking at the total housing capacity by housing type and comparing it to the housing need that was identified through the HAP tool for our city. Next slide, please. So our housing capacity, again, this is, this is just a summary of all the different housing types that we've identified. Next slide, please. And this is the allocation that you saw previously. So next slide, please. So, oh wait, go back. I'm sorry. You have to go, I'm sorry. So the, we've compared the housing unit allocation from the HAP tool to the housing unit capacity based upon those assumed affordabilities. And this, the thing that I wanted to point out to you is we have, we have more than adequate capacity to deal with the housing need that, that we need to demonstrate with this. So don't have a lot to spare, particularly in certain income categories, but we're, but we are, but we, we do seem to be in a, in kind of the sweet spot in terms of meeting our requirements as it relates to this allocation. So as I told you, the next slide, please. The next thing that we have to do is we also have to look at population capacity. And this is almost counterintuitive because you're almost going backwards now. So we have to take the total housing units by housing type from 2020 to 2046. And we're going to estimate our population capacity using the same tool that we use with OFM every year when we report on our new, our new construction. So we multiply the housing type by the average per capita household size for that housing type, which is different for each one. And then we multiply it by the vacancy rate for each housing type, again, different for each one. We use the most recent year, in this case, we use 2023 because I haven't seen the, the numbers yet for 2024. And one of the things that's interesting about this is that we are seeing a trend with both housing or the, the per capita household size and the, and the vacancy rates actually diminishing a little by little every year. So I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure this is the best methodology, but this is the methodology that we have and is consistent with what OFM does. So it's, can't be challenged. Next slide, please. So bottom line, when we use this methodology, it shows us that we have capacity for a population of 24,561. And so two things I would say about this. One is that, is that you have to remember that there is factored into the, into our housing projections is that assumption that we have to deal with cost-burdened households and we, we have to address a gap in housing for house, for cost-burdened households and also for homeless populations. So, so that's, so that, it, it's a, it makes a ton of sense that we would be a little bit higher than what our, what our projection is. Next slide, please. The other thing that we are required to do is we're required to do a, a commercial and industrial lands inventory. We don't, it, we're not given any direction to do anything more than do this, but this is part of the, the. but this is part of the the um uh land capacity analysis. So we have, in fact, done that. Next slide, please. So um, we're looking at vacant and underutilized by zoning category and by land area. And so what we've, we actually have an inventory in Appendix B of this. Next slide, please. We've provided you with a little ma- map. The yellow properties indicate the vacant, commercial, industrial, and mixed-use property, the commercial portion of those those um mixed-use binding site plans. And the green ones indicate underutilized. So there's still, they have been developed, but there's still some remaining area that could be developed more intensively. And in in the case of the underutilized, the table that you see actually accounts for how much of that is still available to be developed. So bottom line, we have about four hundred and twenty-five acres, which is a little bit more than ten percent of our uh land area that's uh still available for uh commercial um or industrial development. And that is the land capacity. Again, I I'd like to ask, the Planning Commission did review this. They have gone through this. They did recommend that it be adopted for planning purposes, which is what I'm asking you to do right now, recognizing that I won't have a final draft for you until we get to almost the end of the comp plan process, but recognizing that it's really essential that we disseminate this now to other partner agencies so that we can get feedback on things like water and sewer capacity, you the energy capacity. Uh, again, ability for the school district to plan, ability for the fire district and the and PD to plan, et cetera. And as I said, it will, it will also inform our park study. It will also inform our transportation network analysis, which we're going to be bringing back to you um uh for uh for approval in March. And we need to get that underway also. So i- it it really does influence a lot. So with that, I wonder if you have any questions? This, forgive me, this is super, super wonky, and it's a box that we have to check.
Any questions in the council?
Councilmember Kennedy, can I jump in real quick?
Absolutely.
Lisa, thanks for putting this together. You answered most of my questions, but I did have just one clarification. That's, I think it was like your third or fourth slide that had the total housing allocation numbers on it. I I was, I I don't know if I was looking at it incorrectly, but I'm trying to understand it and make sure I I I understand it. I- is that saying how many more we need? Or is that saying how many we need in total?
It's saying how many we need, uh, how many new housing units we need from twenty twenty to twenty forty-six. So we have nine hundred that have already been constructed uh since that analysis was done. So this, so um, so it's nine hun- we need nine hundred less than what you see there.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Councilman Dan Orman?
The only question that I would have had would be for the ADU units. At what point will we be able to do ADU units?
So we already are able to do ADU units in all of the areas. We don't necessarily have good data on what has been built. There's a handful in the city. We haven't seen any uh develop in the last couple of years, in part because there's a big obstacle. Uh, and that is that the sewer and water district require a separate um connection fee for that ADU. It's ten thousand dollars. It's pretty, it's pretty pricey to um. And so very often what people are doing is they're not doing a full kitchen. They're just doing a kitchenette because it then doesn't qualify as a. So, a- and I'm not sure if over time immaculate construction doesn't happen. I don't know.
I believe you used used that term once before. I think I've heard her. Thank you. Any other questions in the council? I just had a follow-up question with the ADU, because every time I see that, I think that that's going to be really interesting as we move forward with that. Do we, have we had many inquiries of that in the city yet?
We've had a few, and I I just, I just heard from somebody the other day that probably in the next six months or so, they're probably going to be submitting for one. We've had a few. We've had a few. One of the things that we will be doing, the that we do need to, we do allow it right now. We need to change some of our standards um as it relates to ADUs, which I think will lower some barriers for doing it. The connection fees are something that if if we were the sewer and water purveyor, we could not charge them for that. But Growth Management Act does not apply to a sewer and water district. So um, I I'm not sure that we're going to see a lot of movement there, but we but we have to reduce like parking requirements. We have to eliminate, we have a a size of lot limit. We have a um, a size in relationship to the primary unit. We do have a uh, an owner occupancy requirement also, but that's not enforceable to begin with. But and we have some design standards that are more that are stricter than what we would require on a regular house. So we do have to, we will be making some improvements that will remove some barriers to ADUs. And by the way, it's it it's not, it's, these are all requirements of the new legislation. They're all requirements of the new legislation.
I find it interesting with dealing with the ADU, is I think it's going to be really come up for discussion, is going to be the parking. You start putting these units on, where's the parking going to be? Is there going to increase more parking on the street? And I I could, I could envision citizens coming forward with concerns and complaints about that.
So the new legislation also has some things to say about that. So we cannot require any additional parking for the ADUs. That's number one. That's under the ADU. But there's also some additional requirements that we have to, that we have to look at, limiting the number of parking spaces for other things as related to housing as well, and particularly when the housing is in proximity of transit. And so um, we're, we're actually looking that at that, having those discussions with the Planning Commission over the next couple of meetings. Um, and so it'll be interesting. We will do what we have to do. We'll have some conversations about some of the other suggestions or best practices that are coming from Commerce and see what's what's going to fit in our context. And so um, it'll be um, uh, more to come on that. But as I said, we've got a meeting coming up uh next Wednesday, and we'll be talking again on the twenty sixth.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I do have a question. I just thought of this. The the manufactured homes, there's some mobile homes, you know, that are on mission as you're, you know, passing out of town. Uh, where does that fall into all of this?
So we don't have any manufactured home park, per se. What we have is a manufactured home subdivision. We are going to be talking about, and these are not requirements, but they're things we'll be talking about, is that we have some pretty old standards that like they have to be uh double, they have to be a minimum of two sections, minimum of a thousand square feet, or we have some different standards in there. Uh, we actually have removed some of the barriers for replacing those homes. In recent years, we eliminated a requirement for a garage. We don't require garages for any other other single-family residential. So, um, but we will be talking about whether or not whether or not uh tiny homes make sense. They may be an option for ADUs, but they're not an option right now with the standard, because they are considered manufactured homes. So we might, so we really do have to look at that. What I will say is that, the other thing I'm going to say is that that mobile home subdivision, we're also looking at that in terms of the put um, an area where um there may, they may be um disparate impacts and where they may potentially have some challenges. We may want to look at some programs to kind of increase the um the uh repair, energy efficiency, those sorts of things for those homes to try and uh prevent some displacement, because the that's an area where we that where we feel like we are going to have a potential displacement factor, and that is something we have to look at in this comprehensive plan also. So that's, again, we haven't had the conversations yet, so I'm not sure where the Planning Commission is going to go with that. But those are some of the areas that we will be talking about. There's a lot, we've got a lot of ground to cover.
Very good. You have no other questions, Lisa? Thank you. I I always marvel. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike, can I ask just one more uh quick one, Lisa?
Absolutely. I apologize for not seeing you.
No, tha- that's fine. Uh, Lisa, a- as you know, um, capacity is not necessarily reality. And so my my question is, what happens if we get to, you know, ten or fifteen years from now, and some of these areas that could have been residential or could have been multifamily or whatever end up not being that? And we cannot hit the numbers that are required, let's say. What, can you walk us through what happens then?
So that's the interesting thing. We are planning for capacity. I think that there's a recognition in the state that we're not developers. This is the 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 market's still going to do what the market does. What we have to demonstrate is that we are, we have looked at opportunities to remove barriers and also potentially looking at some some uh opportunities for, to promote more affordable housing types within our community, and whether that's looking at, like, as an example, Tiff Lift can be used for development of affordable housing. Is that something we want to do? I, we have, I, we have a lot of projects that are already committed to Tiff and Lift, so I'm not, but that would be an example. We have um, the fourteen sixty funds that um, it's a sales tax that we clawed back for affordable housing. We've only got about, I think as of last year, we had, Kyle said we had like forty-seven thousand. We're projecting moving forward that we'll be getting about fifty thousand dollars a year moving forward. And so that may be funds that can be used for something, whether it be partnering with um part partnering with a regional uh homeless coalition or something like that, partnering to have some access to some beds in s- in the scattered um, in the scattered uh shelter system that is slowly developing. I I don't know what that looks like, but uh but again, one of the things I will say, um, uh, Mayor Protem, is that uh we are mandated to evaluate where we are in five years. So one of the, one of the things that we're trying to do to set the table for that is to really be implementation oriented in our comprehensive plan. We will have an implementation plan at the end that will give us the a way to do that check-in relative, make it relatively straightforward to see how we're doing in implementing those policies, how we're doing in terms of those goals. But um, at the end of the day, there is not a mandate for us to actually construct this. Having said that, um, I think that a huge part of incorporating this into comprehensive plans across the state is to really start having some serious conversations about the reality of housing and that it that it really is i- impactful to everyone in the state and that we all have a part in solution. And so I I do think that's a lot of this really is eye-opening for a lot of communities. And again, Liberty Lake is pretty far ahead of the game. We, we've already, you're already very well ahead in terms of the middle housing that you already allow for in your development code and the density of development. Having said all the that, it hasn't necessarily done much to ensure affordability.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Have you no other questions? Appreciate, uh, as always, the information you give us. I I I must, I must admit, I I I marvel at your staff and your commissioners, the amount of work that you guys put in and the information you bring to us. You know, it makes it at least for me to be able to do my job a lot easier to have such great confidence the information is being supplied. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to do a little, uh, before we adjourn, if I may, I forgot something that we started, and that would be a roll call. What I'd like to do is that I understand that uh, uh, Mayor Kamiskas is not being able with us this evening, also with Councilman Dunn, I'd entertain a motion to maybe excused.
I will make the motion to excuse.
There in a second.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor of excusing uh, uh, Mayor Kamiskas and Councilman Dunn, please signify by saying aye.
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 Passes. Thank you. We'll take a break and start the meeting, general meeting at seven o'clock. Well, good evening. I'd like to call to order our council meeting for February fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Glad to see everybody who is attending, uh, shiny face, and everybody working on city businesses and stuff. Start out with our invocation would be given by Councilman.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before the ingratitude that's given for the opportunity that we have to gather together as a community and uh discuss the matters of the of the city. And we are grateful for all the blessings that we enjoy living in this beautiful community. And and we ask the blessing to be upon us this evening as we discuss the different things going on here in the city that we can uh be wise in in our council and that we can uh make the best decisions possible. Uh, we pray for a blessing to be upon all those who are having to brave the cold weather, including our first responders. And these blessings and favors we pray for this evening in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pleasure to be in the United States of America. And through the Republic for which stands my nation, under God, and in those who with their native justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order and initiate the roll call. Initiate Councilman Ball.
Oh, here.
Very good. Councilman Kurtz.
Present.
Councilman Dan Orman.
Here.
Present.
Present. Very good. I'd like to know that we have two of our individuals won't be with us tonight. Mayor Kamiskas is not here on a personal item, and also uh, Councilman Dunn, I'd have a motion to excuse those individuals.
I'll make a motion to excuse the two.
For a second? Very good. All those in favor of excusing those two individuals, indicated by yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, so.
And Councilmember Cargill's here too.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was going to bring up the Mayor Procham. He probably knows he's not here, but he is on on Zoom. Uh, normally, we would want to have somebody here, so they've asked me to chair the meeting tonight. The benefit of me chairing the meeting tonight is that at the end, by the end, you're going to look and say, uh, the Mayor Kamiskas and the Mayor Protem does one hell of a good job. So we have a comparison. I'd like to look now for a general approval. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Throw a second.
Second.
Are there any changes to the agenda? None proposed. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, signify by indicating yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes. Now we're up to citizen comments. I'd like to remind everybody that uh you have three minutes. We'll try to do that. And if you start to go over, we'll certainly let you know. We ask that everybody fill out a request. And realize we'll have two attempts for citizen comments now and also at the end of the meeting. Do we have any individuals who would like to speak to council? Can you hear the herd? A patter of feet just rushing to that podium. Very good. Okay. Thanks for the citizen comments. Now, at this point, I, we have no announcements, proclamations, or special presentations. We'll get into reports and inquiries. Uh, City Council?
Oh.
Yes, Council Ball, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody else was there, but I went to that. It was not last week, but the week before, the fraud seminar about frauds and scammers, most relating to online that was facilitated by Kyle Fritz, Officer Kyle Fritz, and it was really, really insightful. And I learned about some things that I didn't know, you know, ways that these people can try to steal your money online. So it was really well attended and Officer Fritz said he wants to do more of these throughout the year, and I would encourage anybody to go. They're open to the public, anybody. There, it was very, very good. He's, he really did his homework on that. So, yeah, thank you.
Councilman Kurtz?
I just wanted to inquire if the, if those will be posted online so that if you can't attend, that you can watch it.
I'm not sure if they were recorded. Deputy Chief, do you know whether those sessions are being recorded?
I know they haven't been recorded at this time, but we can look into doing that for the next presentation, so we can get them recorded.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah, the Councilman, Council, Mayor Protem? Very good. Well, it's moving very smoothly. So the mayor is absent tonight, so we will not have a report there. I'd like to go on to City Administrator Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a brief report for you tonight. We're going to introduce a new feature, and we'll get to that toward the end. But I just wanted to go through some of these reminders to give you a heads up of some of the things that are happening in the near future. We have a Mission Avenue Construction Open House, which is going to be a week from tonight, February 11th, at the Liberty Lake Library, starting at 6:00 PM. And this is really something that we should be doing for any capital project that affects access to roadways. And so we are, this, this is the inaugural construction open house. We plan to have one of these each time we have a project that will affect travel through the city. And so if you're interested in learning about the project, finding out what the scope is, the construction area, the timeline, the cost, any of those things, come on down to the library, and we will have staff members from the Public Works Department and the Planning Department there to give a brief presentation and to answer any of your questions about this particular project. We also have a project page on our website that you can go to and see all of that general information. But certainly, if you have additional questions, come on down to the open house and ask them in person and, and get that feedback directly from the folks that are managing it. A little bit farther down, Monday, February 17th, this is two weeks from yesterday, I believe. We are going to be closing City Hall and the library in observance of President's Day, and then coming back immediately after on Tuesday, the 18th, for a council meeting. So keep that in mind. We've got the holiday right before the council meeting again, next round. And then some of us are going to be traveling out to Olympia for the Association of Washington City's Annual City Action Days event. This is a an advocacy event, and so we'll touch on the legislative session a bit farther down the report. But this is our opportunity to go out and kind of talk to our delegation and bring up things from our legislative agenda that we want to promote, support, oppose, make comments on. And so the mayor and I will be traveling out to Olympia on the February 18th, and we'll be gone a couple of days, and we'll report back at the following council meeting. And then another reminder, we've gotten a couple of responses to the scheduling poll on the Strategic Investment Plan Workshop. This is something that we're targeting for a little bit farther out, mid-March, toward the end of March. So if you can remember to get on, and I'll resend the link, so you've got it fresh in your email. But just let us know your availability on some of those dates, so we, so that we can get this event scheduled. Any questions about those items before we move on to the other pieces of the report?
Mark, just real quick, I don't know if you saw, but the bill that we had requested as part of our legislative package to push back the date of the comprehensive plans, the comprehensive plan due date, that was introduced. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that in case you were not aware of it.
And good catch on that, and I will make sure to point that out on the sheet that you have in front of me when we get to that point of the report to talk about the agenda. But thank you for pointing that out, Mayor Protem. Any questions about the events before we move on? All right. In that case, I'm going to invite Ben Turner, our Public Works Director, to mention a bit about the Bicycle Friendly Community Initiative and some data collection and reporting that has happened as a result. Ben, are you available?
All right, you should be able to hear me now.
We can, thanks.
Okay. Hold on, let me turn my video on real quick. If I can figure out how to do it. I'll just do it without the video. Okay, now you can see me. Okay. So we just recently received our bicycle-friendly commuter report card. This is something that Kate Ferris has spearheaded for several years. So she sent me the results. We received the bronze award just recently. This is an award. We've been at the bronze level since 2007. Some of the things that we're doing really well here in Liberty Lake is education and encouragement, and I think a lot of that is due to Kate Ferris more than anybody else in the community. Some of the things that we can work on to get up at a higher level is, is more engineering solutions, evaluation, and planning, things that we're already kind of kicking off. So I expect that. We'll, we'll continue approving this as well. The one thing that the report card does give us is several pages of recommendations to improve, and those are some of the, some of those things, as I look through them, we're already kind of working on with the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So we're going to take a look at those at our February meeting and see if we can put as much of those into action. One of the things I did notice in the report card is we received very few responses from the survey. So that's something that we can look at as well to kind of increase participation and get the information that we're looking for. But just wanted to let everybody know that we did receive an award at the bronze level, and I'll be working to approve that in future years.
Any questions? I know that you've had a brief time to look at the report card, but any questions about the the report card for Ben while he's still on the line?
So who puts this?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask. So there was only 18 responses. Was this something that was up on our website or where?
I don't believe it was, Councilman Spencer. I, I never saw it. I think that's one thing I can work with, with Mark with, and see maybe we can incorporate this into our satisfaction survey. I was thinking about that, just to increase, because it looks, very few responses. So yeah, that's really the thing I think we can improve on the most is getting this out there and letting people know about it, because I wasn't aware of it until Katie sent it to me a couple of weeks ago. So I just get it out there and let people know it's, know it's out there, and that we get as many responses as we can.
So this is one of those things, Councilmember, where we can certainly work with, with Katie and the team putting this together to, to maybe incorporate more effectively into the things that we're, the tools that we're using. These 18 responses came from a group of volunteers that went out essentially and did like a bike audit. And as they were riding around noted these things. And so there, there, there should be a better way to get more participation, and we'll work with Katie to do that.
Yeah, I'm good. He pretty much answered.
Any other questions for council?
All right, moving on. So we are now going to spend a few minutes talking about the 2025 Legislative Session Update. And what you have in front of you on the 11 and 11 by 17 printout is a list, and Mayor Protem, you don't have this in front of you. I'll, I'll email you a copy of this so that you can see what's going on here. This is not something that we are proposing to send you periodically. This is there are 40-something bills that we are specifically tracking that relate to our legislative agenda that council adopted. And so what we're doing with this for an internal tracking system is basically to give ourselves heads up on when these bills are coming up for some kind of action. And so the way that it is currently sorted is to give you an idea. And if you look at the column labeled "Last Action", you will see going down midway roughly of the second page, there are, whatever that number is, 12 or 13 of these bills that are scheduled to have something happen to them over the next couple of days. And so we'll potentially be logging in to testify remotely on some of these, certainly providing comments to the legislature through the legislature's website on some of these. I can't find it looking through here, but the bill that Mayor Protem mentioned about delaying the due date of the comprehensive plan is listed in here somewhere. It has been introduced, and it's been scheduled for a committee hearing as far as I can recall. And so another thing that I wanted to point out, and this is something that we are going to put on our website. So it's not like you're seeing this now and you'll never see it again. But we, we want to certainly enlist those folks that went through our legislative advocacy workshop to help us kind of work on this. And through the miracle of volunteerism, I want to introduce to you a gentleman who came to us and volunteered some of his time to help put all of this information together and keep an eye on it through the session. And so Louis, are you online?
I am online. Can you hear me all right?
We can. And so I'm going to introduce you, counsel, to Louis Beck. Louis is a law student at Gonzaga. And Louis, tell the council about yourself in a couple of minutes and why you wanted to help us out with this initiative.
Absolutely. So like Mark said, my name is Louis Beck. I'm a second-year student at Gonzaga University School of Law. I'm originally from Nevada, so I'm new to the Spokane region. I grew up in Las Vegas. I completed my bachelor's in political science and English literature and my master's in public administration and public policy at the University of Nevada in Reno. And so why I'm here is, as a G U law student, we are required to complete about 30 hours of volunteer service in order to graduate, in order to get our Juris Doctorate. And I decided I really wanted to give back to a local municipality here in the region. And for me, I consider this a very worthwhile endeavor. I understand that local municipalities may not have the resources to utilize or hire a policy analyst during the state's legislative session. And so deciding to utilize my hours towards this goal and provide this service, I find very meaningful. And ultimately, I really hope that the city of Liberty Lake is going to find this experience with me meaningful as well. And I really just want to thank Mark and the city for giving me this opportunity, allowing me to use my hours towards this volunteer opportunity. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But if not, I'll concede back to Mark to continue with his report.
Any questions for Louis? So I'll, I'll say also, Louis is donating approximately three hours a week to us, and without that horsepower, it would, it would be difficult to put something like this together, because as he said, we don't have a dedicated policy analyst. And so we're thankful that he is working with us and is volunteering to take on this task. So thank you again, Louis, and we'll talk to you on Friday.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the last item on my report's agenda, and that is the new feature that I mentioned earlier. We are going to, before I do that, are there any questions on the list of bills that I passed out? Again, we can, we are going to put this on our website so that it's a little bit more user-friendly. But if you have questions now, I'll be happy to answer them. Councilmember Kurtz?
I don't have a question, but just thank you for doing it, because I think this is a nice summary that we can just look at and actually see what the city feels they need to support, oppose, or watch. I think, I guess I do have a question. What is the priority column on the last side?
So the, great question. The priority column is shorthand for our strategic priority and on our agenda, which one of those items, the specific bill is related to.
Thanks.
I'll just add, add one more quick comment, and that is, Mark, if, if we're only tracking 40 out of 1600, we should feel very lucky.
Well, and, and to that point, there may be additional ones that show up on this list as we go deeper into the session. But these are the ones that we've identified as having a direct relationship to something that's on our agenda, so.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ball, it looks like you have a question.
What do the acronyms mean then? EVO, PGI?
So, so very quickly, EVO would be economic vitality and opportunity. And so if you go onto our legislative agenda, those column headings relate to our strategic plan priorities. And so planned growth and infrastructure, public safety and well-being, and down the list.
Okay, thank you.
And Evan, if you can pull up that presentation. So with this next item, our plan going forward at every council meeting during the report of the city administrators to give you a profile of one of the programs from the priority-based budgeting methodology that we've transitioned to. And so I'm going to start out, and you'll hear not from me every time, but, but I'll start out to give you a taste of what this is going to look like. And our plan is to spend a very short amount of time at each meeting on these, five to seven minutes. Obviously, we want to give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. But just to give you a very high-level sense of what each of these programs is going to be supplying by way of outcomes and results. And so Evan, if you can go to the next slide. We talked about this a little bit during the budget development process, but as we go through each of these, we want to give not only the council, but the public a better sense of what's happening here. And so the program that we're profiling tonight is the community engagement program. And so this is in the executive department, and it is a community-facing program. And we talked a little bit about what those things mean in budget development, but we have two types of programs, community and governance. Most of our programs are community, meaning they're outward-facing. They relate to some service that we're delivering to the community. And the description is right there, and it will preserve through the rest of the slides. But this program is designed to cover activities that foster collaboration and participation in the community. And you see all those ones that we've got listed there as examples of that. The resources that have been budgeted to fulfill this program's responsibilities and to deliver those services are, you see, listed there on the left-hand table. We've got 1.27 full-time equivalents and a total budgeted expenditure of approximately 150,000. Those approximatives will turn into hard numbers as the Resource X team solidifies the budget upload. And so at your next presentation, you should see those as real numbers. And then you've got these attributes of what this is, kind of these categories that we've used to score this and put this in a quartile, and you can see that it's increasing in demand. Even though it's increasing in demand, right now, it only is benefiting, directly benefiting 10% or so of the population. It's a self-mandated program. We have an ordinance that establishes the Community Engagement Commission, and so it's a self-mandate. There is no cost recovery currently, and other entities could provide this service. So if you go to the next slide. How does this align with our strategic plan? You see on the left, all of those priorities that are considered to be community priorities are listed with the relative connected, connectedness or alignment that this particular program holds with each. And you'll see it's some for public safety and on down the list. There's a strong alignment with quality of life and connect, connectedness. And altogether, when you assess this from the alignment to the strategic plan against those priorities and what we just reviewed called basic program attributes, it comes out as one of the more aligned programs in that quadrant. And so it is in the third place, right? It's a strong alignment. And so most of our programs that you'll see are going to be in the most or more, because we, we want to give you information about those programs that are strongly aligned with our strategic plan. Next slide, please, Evan. And this is really what we wanted to bring to your attention, because we haven't talked much about this going forward. This is the accountability piece. This is, what do I get for this investment? And so as you look over on the left, the result, each of these programs are going to have somewhere between one and three results. And so the two that we're going to talk about tonight, you'll see the next one on the next slide, but this one is resident participation in local decision-making processes trending upward each year. We want to see more people involved in local decision-making, and how are we going to measure that? Well, you see the measurements there on the left side. This, these will be reported on a periodic basis. Not all of these measures will be taken monthly. Some of them will be quarterly, some will be annually. But on a periodic and regular basis, we'll be reporting back to you on these measurements as they relate to ultimately achieving that result. Next slide, please, Evan. And so the second result that's associated with this program is trust in the city government is trending upward each year. This is directly mentioned on our strategic plan as one of the results that we want to achieve. through the plan itself. And so the measurements for this result are listed there. We have two questions on the community satisfaction survey that are directly related to this. So we'll be using those as measurements. And then also the number of resident concerns that are addressed timely. David Gaynor, our communications coordinator is in the process right now of going through and identifying a potential replacement for kind of a, a customer response tool. We use something called Text My Gov. It's a widget on our website. We need to replace it. It doesn't work well. And so what we want to be able to do is we want to be able to take your request as a resident, do something with it, and you need to know what the answer is in a timely way. And so that's what that last measure is, is alluding to. And so all of these are designed to allow you as council and residents as the public to hold us accountable as the government that you're giving tax dollars to, to accomplish these things for fulfilling our strategic plan. And so on a council meeting by council meeting basis, we're going to take you through these programs. We have sixty four of them. So it's going to take us a while. We're going to do one per meeting. And we want to kind of do it this way. It's going to be a standard format that looks like this. Do you have any questions about this particular program that I can help answer for you tonight?
Yes, Mark, of the sixty four, is there any specific priority to those sixty four we'll start addressing?
So our goal is to bring you kind of starting with a prioritization of going from the most aligned with our strategic plan to the least aligned kind of in that order.
Okay.
And then giving department heads kind of the flexibility to pick ones that they want to bring to you to maybe highlight a specific aspect of them. But, but generally, we're going to go from highest priority to lowest.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions about this before we move on? Hearing none, I'll say, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mark. I'd like to add before I go on to the next that I failed to mention that our attorney representative, Mr. Bouts is, is on, online tonight on Zoom. So he's not here physically, but he's here.
I am. Thank you. I, I thought it might be better that I don't have a coughing fit in front of everyone.
Well, I noticed that you blacked out the background. So, you know, Lord only knows where you're hiding right now.
I wish it was that simple. It was somewhere fun.
Very good. Next on the agenda would be Spokane Valley Fire Department. I look forward to your reports and comments.
Well, just like you, my, my boss is preparing to go to Olympia tomorrow. So you get to see my beautiful face tonight. So Fire Chief Soto and commissioners are heading to Olympia tomorrow to deal with some local issues with the, our local representatives. So I'm not only for our fire department, but for this community as well. So I'm take great pleasure in being here tonight. Tom Hatley, Deputy Chief Spokane Valley Fire Department, and this is our, I'll make this as brief as we possibly can. I know you guys have a lot going on today. So this is your report for Spokane Valley Fire Department for the month of January. For the month, we had two thousand calls. And as you see, the majority of our calls are ALS, BLS calls. Some things as we go through, MVAs are kind of, kind of leading the way, although we've had kind of a mild winter so far. Couldn't tell by tonight's weather, but it's been very mild, but we definitely have had an uptick in MVAs, our building alarms, fires. And then our cares calls. And if you guys, to kind of give you a little history, the cares call is basically, we have a contract with the city of Spokane. When we have EMS calls that we go on constantly, the same address or the same folks that need additional care. The city of Spokane, the cares team, we have a contract for them to come out and provide an avenue to give them the information, the services to help those individuals out. So that's what that means if you guys are asking that questions. Next slide. Again, the hotspots through Spokane Valley Fire Department as in months past, every time we're up here, it's usually we're at that hotspot between stations seven, eight, and one. That's usually our busiest fire stations right in the core of the Spokane Valley. And as you see, represents the number of calls that are in our district. Next slide. Again, our breakdown of our twenty four hundred incidents, Valley Engine One and Valley Engine Seven, only one call difference for the month. And as we go through again, a very, again, another very busy month. Next slide. Again, our station locations and on how busy they are. Again, out of Station Eight, three hundred and sixty one calls out of Station Eight, at Station Seven, two hundred and ninety five. Next slide. Again, breakdown of our automatic aid partners with the city of Spokane, Fire District Eight and Fire District Nine. The service they provide us as well as what we provide for them. Next slide. Again, as we look at the numbers for the month of January, for the years past, this again is one of the, the second busiest January on record for our fire department, and we're only behind seven percent from last year, which was our number one year, our busiest year was last year. Next slide. Now the breakdown for the city of Liberty Lake. We had a hundred and ten calls. Again, the breakdown, ALS calls, we had forty, thirty seven BLS calls. Again, fire alarms, MVAs, cares, calls, and so forth. And then again, one fire. Next slide. Again, our station three, just right down the street here, again, taking the majority of those calls. Second due in coming into the city of Liberty Lake is Valley Engine Four, again, Valley Ladder Ten. And next slide. And again, this is actually, again, our second busiest month and for the city of Liberty Lake with a hundred ten calls. And again, there's no letting up. We continue to get busier and busier as we get bigger and bigger. So that's the end of my report. You guys have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Now we'll go on to Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District. Do you have a representative here or anybody on the, online? We do not. Very good. Move on to workshop discussion. A library design and construction project scope, schedule, and funding. Councilman Cargill?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kennedy. Mark, were you wanting to go first on this?
No, Mayor Protim, we're here in support. We have Ben Turner and Jandy Humble and others available to fill in any context. Take it away.
All right. Thanks very much. I'm gonna try to share my screen here. So just give me one moment to do that. Hopefully, everyone will be able to see my brilliant power, PowerPoint making ability. Can everyone see that? Everyone can see that, okay?
We can.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. So as we've been talking about this issue for the past year, what has really struck me is the fact that we have a lot of really unique opportunities on this particular project, not only with this particular project, but with several other things that several other council members have put forward. So obviously, we all know that the city owns this building, the Legacy Church Building. The intention, of course, is that we would create the new library out of the Legacy Church Building, which is the building at twenty three, one twenty nine East Mission. And that has been the discussion that we've been having. We've obviously had a lot of talk about, you know, whether it makes sense to put the library there, what we would do with the other city buildings if we put the library there, what would happen with the old library facility? Are we going to have enough funding to put something in this building and so on? And so as we've discussed this, obviously, I've, I've, I've kind of taken a few notes of what everybody's been saying they want to try to accomplish with this project. We've talked about the upgraded and expanded library, of course. The town square completion has come up many times. Councilmember Ball has rightly said that we need more community amenities. I have, have really been looking at, trying to make sure we have the lowest cost to the taxpayers. And of course, community input is part of this as well. I asked Jandy for another look at the the community and facility assessment that was done back in twenty nineteen of the library facility, because I really wanted to go through it point by point again, just to figure out, are we actually hitting the mark with this building? Or are we trying to put a square peg into a round hole? So for folks who don't know, obviously, part of this community assessment was an online survey of three hundred and fifty nine residents. There were others who also participated from outside of the city, but we were able to confirm that three hundred and fifty nine from inside the city participated in the assessment. In person meetings were attended by seventy two people, according to the report. And what I found interesting was that a lot of the recommendations, again, just to remind everyone, talked about having more meeting room space, having more ability for the library to hold events in a meeting room or a larger room, having more meeting room space just in general. And the library assessment specifically said that the new library should be sixteen thousand five hundred to nineteen thousand five hundred square feet, somewhere in that ballpark. So we've talked about that quite a bit. What struck me is, as I read through it again, was the fact that the Legacy Church Building, as we know, is only about fourteen thousand four hundred square feet, which is great. It's an expansion, obviously. It, it increases the amount that we have to work with. However, my concern is that maybe it's not big enough, according to this assessment. What I would hate for us to do is move into this building and then five or ten years from now, turn around and say, well, geez, now it's too small for what we were trying to do. The cost, obviously, we all know, the city paid two point one million for it. We've, we've discussed the issue of the code requirements to turn it into what we need to turn it into, and that's roughly three million dollars. So the remaining cost for the project, if we went to the full five point seven, is about two point seven nine million. So total, again, the project was supposed to be about five point seven, five point eight is what we were discussing at the end of last year, which means our total investment would be somewhere in the neighborhood of seven point eight million dollars, give or take. The estimated current value, as Mark has told us, from the insurance company's standpoint, is somewhere between three point five to four million dollars in that ballpark. So again, we've talked about the possibility of not only the library building, but also what happens with town square. And Councilmember Kennedy brought up the previous idea that was put forward before the council and the community that maybe we have a new library building and community center that are connected for dual use. And again, my clip art is, is not very good here, but you can kind of see what I'm talking about here based on the previous conversations that we've talked about with that council member can be presented to the council, where it would be the library, perhaps on this left side here at town square, connected to a community center that could be used for meeting space for the library or could also be used as a community center that we've talked about trying to put in for, for quite some time. What I think is really interesting about all this is that if we were to go with kind of a, an amenity attraction, so to speak, we've got a lot of interesting ideas. This is the front of the Kansas City Library. And it's interesting because it's, it doesn't necessarily look like a building. It looks like a bookshelf. And if you turn it from this side as well, you can see same type of thing. It looks like a giant bookshelf with books. What if we were able to do something like this at town square to be an icon in our community where we could have the front of the building look like a giant bookshelf that has books on it? Again, I'm just throwing out ideas here. Nothing, nothing, of course, is set in stone. What if we did something to where we did eleven thousand square feet for the library plus an eight thousand square foot community center, again, that was connected, that would give us nineteen thousand feet for library use? Library would be the number one tenant, obviously. Library would have the number one access to the room. And if we did this at, let's say, seven hundred and fifty per square foot, which is an outrageously high number. But let's just say for the sake of argument that it was seven hundred and fifty square feet, the cost would be fourteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Now, we know what we've set aside for this particular project. We've set aside about four, a little over four, and then we're hoping to get donations and we're hoping to get the state grant for the other building as well. So we know where, you know, the, the, the gap that we would have to fill to make something like this happen. But I think we have the chance to do something even more than that. And that is based on something that Councilmember Ball brought up a couple of meetings ago, and I think is, is a brilliant idea. What if we also decided, you know, let's couple this entire project together with a complete and total finishing of town square and do something like a marketplace on the other side? So we have the library, we have the community center, and then maybe we have a marketplace that's inside as well, that can be three hundred and sixty five days per year. Councilmember Ball talked about the Pybus Center in Wenatchee, and I've been there many times. It's a great facility. It's basically, it's kind of like a large shed. It's a concrete floor where vendors set up and they sell their products. And you can see inside here, it didn't really cost that much to do because again, it's not something that is, is, you know, a huge design or, or project that needs a lot of, of intricate work. It's basically just a, a giant building with a cement floor and a few lights hanging up above. What if we were able to do something like that on the other side of town square? So one of the options that I wanted to bring forward is that we could engage a firm to build out a concept for town square that includes the library, includes the community center, and includes perhaps a public market. And we have them come back to us with something maybe in April or May. If it's feasible, we could look at selling the building on mission. And then we allocate the funds of that sale to this project, which would get us in the range of eight point eight to, to nine million, somewhere in that ballpark. And then we place the measure on the ballot before voters in the fall to approve on the rest of, of the funding mechanism. The reason why I'm suggesting this is because it, it accomplishes so many different things that I think everybody on the council has talked about wanting to accomplish. And that is, it gets us the new library. It gets us a new community center and space for community events. It gets us the new market. There's finality to the town square saga, which we've been all discussing for years and years and years. With the right design, I think it could be a destination or accommodation project. The market could bring in more sales tax to the revenues to the city. And it gets a community to be involved with a final vote to give them the yea or nay. And so that is what I wanted to bring forward tonight. I know it's a lot to think about. I am not necessarily wed to any of these things in particular, but I wanted to bring forward as a discussion point because my concern on the building that we've purchased is that, A, it's not big enough. And B, we'd be spending so much to bring it up to code that we wouldn't really have enough to, to do more with it. We'd be, it, it would almost be better to spend those dollars on something that would be a better, bigger project at town square. So that is my presentation, Councilmember Kennedy, and I'll turn it back to you for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I appreciate that. Council, open for discussion. And keep in mind, if, if, if I should miss you, please hit my attention. So you have the opportunity to speak as many times you like. I think this is a very serious thing that we're looking at moving forward with. Yes, Councilman Curts.
So I was hoping that somewhere in the middle of that town square, you're going to put a pool in and then it would have accomplished like all of our goals. I was just hoping there was one more red dot in the middle. So I appreciate the presentation. I like the idea of finishing town square with something that the community wants. I hesitate to continue to evaluate. And then we're going to get down the road and we're still not going to make a decision. I think that's my hesitation. Because we've evaluated, we've evaluated, we've invested money in in a lot of different things and we still haven't moved forward. Perhaps that's because it hasn't been the right project. I think there's, that could be part of it too. I think that I, I wish that we had had this sort of discussion a year ago because I think we've spent a lot of time and a lot of money and emotional energy and the community has too. I guess one of my questions, if we're talking about putting something on the ballot, I think you said for this fall. Mark, when does something? Mark, when does something need to be prepared for the ballot? I thought it was April.
This would have to be on the November ballot, and so we're talking 90 days before that.
Okay, so there's more time than I thought there was.
Yes.
And I think my only other thing for the council to consider is that what I, if we're actually going to think about this and go forward with this, I would like all of us to be on the same page and supporting it and not have people out there in the community campaigning against it. So I think that those are the concerns that I have. But thank you for the presentation, Mayor Protem.
Councilman Ball.
Oh, I didn't have my hand up. I'm still thinking. Well, I'll just say, yeah, that was a very interesting presentation. I need more time to think about it. Mayor Protem, I do want to thank you for the shout-out about the market and for including that. I appreciate it.
Councilman Dan Norman.
I, of course, you know, I've already been through two of them, and I thought that they were great ideas then. I've always felt that Legacy Church was great when we initially looked at it until we found out the coding, and then the proximity of how big it is. It didn't quite meet what we needed. And I've always looked at things of even Trailhead Golf Course, you know, community space isn't big enough for, say, the father-daughter dance for the Kiwanis. All those things, we need something bigger. I would definitely love to get the input from the community for this and get by in.
Yeah, the Council, Councilman Spencer, do you have any comment?
Sure. You know, I think this is very interesting. I know you guys all know how I feel about, you know, going into debt for something like this. So in a situation where we can put this out to the community and say, this is an option, and if the community likes it and wants to help foot the bill for that, then who am I to say no?
Yes, Councilman Ball.
Yeah, well, one thought I have is that we need to make a decision on this and get, you know, get the library going if we intend not to lose the grant. I mean, even though we haven't officially been awarded yet, I'm confident that we will. So it's $937,000 that we'd be losing.
And just to clarify, that award is only applicable to the development of the library at the 23129 East.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Right, we'd lose it.
Yes, Councilman Kurtz.
Can we apply for another one?
Sure.
Any comments from the council? I would like to add, if I may, is that I go back a long ways with this. 2005, 2006, went through every time we were going to have committees. I was on those committees. I went door-to-door handing out brochures. I was in the park when we were giving out ice cream to try to generate interest in that. I sat in that committee when we had the assessment done. The number of 18,000 or 19,000, where that came from is that there was a figure that was thrown out as a kind of a rule of thumb. It's not in concrete. Is it, well, one square foot per residence? And at the time, it was looking at, we were probably going to be about 18,000 to 19,000. So that's what it was kind of looked at. And there was some discussion, is it, well, that's a number we have to hold to? Well, if we have to hold to that number, the Spokane Valley Library of 24,000 square feet that we just built is already too small. So that's a number of which we can't hang our hat on, on it. I've always been an advocate. I will never change on this. I've been a broken record. I want to see something developed over, at that 6.2 acres. We put a lot of time and effort in. The city has, previous council has. We've had countless, countless meetings and citizen involvement. And for a long period of time, you know, what can we do with that? We put a lot of effort into, we had the option number one, which we have completed, and then option number two and number three. It has gone to the citizens on two occasions, actually, three. It was voted down, because other things were added to it, and I'm concerned about that. I would have a concern about adding on the farmer's market aspect of it, because I'm in favor that it goes to the people. And why I'm in favor is because the committees that have been involved in this, the library trustees have convinced me that what I've heard for a long period of time at that podium, this is what the people want. This is what the people have said. We need to listen to the people and give them what they want. The only way we can do that is gotta go to a vote. It's gotta go to a vote. I feel that in the past, what has worked against us of trying to get it through, one, was a combination of too many things. But also, when it came out in 2005 or 2006, we didn't have the money. We had no money. We had to have the citizens do, here with the 100% load. When we came back in 2016, we still didn't have the money. So that had an effect on it. I want you to realize right now, the council's been able to take money from different sources, but we've got over $5 million. Now, there is 500,000 supposedly talked about we might get in donations. If we do, that's great, but we can't count on that. The $937,000, I'm confident we're going to get that. I really am. Even though the state is $10 million upside down, that's the reason why I'm confident we're going to get it, because they don't pay attention. If we're that far out, what's another million dollars? If we didn't move ahead with this particular building, we can apply for it. And I think we'd be confident to be able to get it there. I see that this is a golden opportunity for everybody to get what we want. One, we have people who want a larger library. Two, we have people who want a larger library and a community center. That's me. I've never backed away from that. I want to see a community center, and I've always been an advocate, it has to be tied to the library, because by doing so, it protects the future of the library. My experience has been, since I've been a council member prior to that, is that one thing I've been able to do is build relationships with other cities who've been around for a lot more years than we have. And one thing that's come up scares the hell out of me is a lot of these cities, when they get to the point where they're totally built out and they have no commercial property coming in, and taxes or expenses keep going up, you know the first two things that go? Now, I'm going to start in this order. The library and a pool. Those are the things that go. I feel that by combining community center with the library on that property, we will guarantee for the future, all of our kids and grandkids, that we will have a strong library and a strong community center that these people have looked at and said, you know what? This is one thing we can come together on. We can do that. And we can do it now, instead of waiting for a bill out, when it's going to cost a lot more money. So.
Can I make one more comment, Councilmember Kennedy?
Absolutely.
I was just gonna echo that, and I had written it down as well. I think the difference between what we've done before and the situation now is that we have a good chunk of this ready to go in terms of the money. And that makes the sale, at least from my point of view, a lot easier to the public, knowing that the city has set this amount aside for this concept, and that we're not talking about the city taxpayers footing, well, the city taxpayers would cover all of it, but we're not talking about an extra bill to cover 100% of it that we already have, perhaps a third and maybe half of what the project would cost. And I would just, you know, I would just like to ask everyone to kind of visualize rolling into town and seeing a huge, maybe it's a huge neon sign that says Liberty Lake Public Market or something like that, turning the corner and seeing a library building that is not just your typical strip mall turned into a library, but is actually maybe 20-foot-tall books or 30-foot-tall books sitting at the center of our town, instead of just a brown field as it is right now. I think this has the potential to do a lot for the community, and it's part of the reason why I've brought it forward. I understand everyone's concerns. I have the same concerns, and I definitely think we need more discussion on it. But to Mark's point, you know, we know now kind of what our timeline is. If we're going to put something on the ballot, we're going to have to probably have it ready to go by August to make that happen.
Councilman Kurtz.
And so I think that was my next question is, if we need to, beginning with the end in mind, by August, we need to have a workable, viable building plan for something, if that's the direction we want to go. Is it realistic to do that in between now and then? What does that cost? And how are we going to come to agreement on what it is we want to do? Or I feel like we need to do some sort of retreat like we did with Trailhead, where we sit and we hash all this out. So that was like three questions in one, I think.
So if I don't address one of them, remind me, and I'll be glad to go back and make sure that I do. A couple of thoughts to keep in mind when answering those questions. I would not expect to have to put a full project design into that timeline. There would be some kind of conceptual design, similar to what we brought forward with the two options on the library. And that could fairly easily be done between now and August. The difficult piece that I think extends that timeline is getting to some consensus on what is included in that concept. And so that's going to be the iterative process that takes the time. Cost, it depends on what level of detail, how many options you're looking for, all of those kinds of things. Another couple of things to keep in mind. Council previously directed staff to undertake a facilities master plan and bring those results back before we went forward with any future decision-making. We, as has always been the plan, are scheduled to bring those results back to you on February the 18th. So you've not seen those results yet. The second thing to keep in mind is, I believe, also on the 18th, Lisa is going to bring forward a Parks Master Planning Professional Services Contract, which includes a whole host of public engagement pieces that cover all of the city's parks. And so we've not heard yet from the community on what its needs are with respect to parks and open space. And so those are two things that I would ask you to keep in mind as this conversation unfolds. Did I answer all of your questions?
I think so. I think the other thing, maybe it's not a question, but more a statement, that if we were actually going to look at doing something, and it lends into something that you said, that we actually need to all be on the same page with what it is we're putting out and what it is we're putting forward, and what it is we're going to invest in getting designs for, if that's something that we want to do. And I still feel like there's got to be some way to hear from the community about what they think about this plan, too.
And building all of that into the timeline, given that we're in February, if August is the date, that we're going to have to hustle. So it can be done, but we're going to have to hustle.
Yes, Councilman Dan Norman, you had your answer.
Mark, is there any possibility of, one, utilizing some of the concepts that we had prior in 2008, when it went out to vote? And again, in 2016?
16.
I think they were the same plans. The other question that I have is, if it is August, I know there's a certain point that the city has to stay away once it goes and gets put onto the ballot, that it needs to be taken from, you know, the community-wise, to catapult it forward, to even advertise for it. Can you kind of give us that timeline? Do you know?
I'm not sure. Can you clarify that second question? I'm not sure if you're talking about the time between placing something on the ballot and the election?
Right.
Okay.
At what point can the city still advocate and get information out? Not necessarily advocate, I guess that's the wrong word, but get information out about what they're going to be voting on.
Right, so up until the point of the election, we can provide educational material. Sean, do you want to clarify what the PDC rules are with respect to campaigning?
Right, I mean, you can't use public facilities to advocate. I mean, presumably, this is a bond request. Is that what ultimately the desire, is that what your question is, Wendy?
Yes.
Yeah, so you wouldn't be able to use public facilities to campaign for it. You know, as we've had happen in the past, that, you know, with regard to certain measures, the council can take positions, one way or the other. You know, there can be campaigns that are done separately, as long as it's not using public facilities relative to, you know, advocating for it or against it, whatever the situation may be. But the key thing is just not using public facilities to, you know, to do it one way or the other.
And to answer the first question, yes, we can, we have all of that material. We can resurrect it to the extent that whomever we hire to put together the new concepts has a starting place. So we have all of the material and can use it however we wish to.
For me, it's basically, if we already have things that we don't have to spend extra money on for the public, it was great then. It just, the first time it didn't pass, we went into a recession. The second time it didn't pass, it had a whole lot more added on to it. And they also looked at the fact that we bought a new library, and it was only, I think, maybe five, six years old at the time. So I think this is the time to do it.
And just to clarify, I would not recommend not developing concepts. I would not advocate taking something that's already been developed and just reintroducing it as a ballot measure. Using it as a starting point for coming up with a new set of concepts, sure.
And I just want to, real quick, Councilmember Kennedy, if I could, when we're talking about August, I just want to make sure everyone knows what we're saying here. We're not talking about putting her on the primary ballot in August. We're talking about, like, the end of August, we would have to have it in to the Spokane County Auditor's Office so that they can place it on the November ballot. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Correct.
Councilman Ball.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Cargill said selling the legacy building would be one way to raise some of the money for this alleged project. Is that building easily saleable?
We would have to hire a broker and put it on the market and find out. I don't know.
Right, so that's something to think about. You know, we don't know what's going to happen to the market. And also, so, but what does it cost to put something like this on the ballot? There's got to be a cost, right?
Kyle, what did we come up with?
I can't recall the exact, it's, I would say that that is nominal. That's a, I would say, insignificant amount in relation to the ask you're asking.
Okay, okay. And then with regard to community center, okay, so community center can mean a lot of things to a lot of people. What does that mean? I mean, what are we talking about? Meeting rooms were going to be part of the new library, but is 8,000, I think that's what you said, square feet necessary for meeting rooms? I mean, what else can be done in this community center? For example, Wendy said something about a father-daughter dance. Are there petitions that can come down? And you can have a dance in there? Can you show a film in there? I mean, what is, what's a community center? It means something to everybody, different.
I think the sky is the limit, Councilmember Ball, on that. And if anybody has ever been over to the Mirabu Park Event Center, they have a very large room there. And then they also have several rooms that are set aside for pottery and those type of things. So to me, I think it's different for every person. But to me, a community center is a very large build, a very large room that can host a variety of things, like Councilmember Kennedy was talking about. Maybe it's the father-daughter dance, maybe it's other community events, maybe it's a town hall forum, whatever. And then smaller rooms that could also be used. And that's exactly what the library assessment needs called for, is not only a larger room, that's like a multipurpose room, but also some smaller meeting rooms as well.
Okay.
If I may interject. Last week, I attended the library trustees. Last week I attended the uh Library Trustees, uh not Trustees meeting, but Friends of Library. And when we got the report from the library, one thing that really jumped out at me that I've heard many times, but of course it jumped out then even more, is that the amount of usage at the library has increased. But what has increased to the point we have no more space is uh events. That's why we need a community center. Because if it really came down to, and and don't start jumping on social media after I say this, do we need a library? When we already have a library that's not broken? Or do we need a library for the future for the community center, which protects the growth of the library? It becomes hand in hand. One thing that came up in that survey that you have to understand, that the survey showed this, that libraries, different when I was a kid, was it, y- you went there for education, knowledge, and that. What has changed that is this. Now, what the survey showed is that the libraries continue to grow, but the, it grows because the people want the community center aspect of it, the gathering place. That's what we have, and that's what we can complete on it. That's why I'm excited about this. Some may choose to look at this as it, well, we're trying to destroy it or change it or something like that. If you think about since day one, what the city has wanted, this is what we've wanted. It's just a matter, it took a while to evolve into what we might get. Now, Councilman Ball's comment about what, what the building sell for. My thought was, I pray that it'll sell for more than what we paid for, or it'll make us look very foolish. Councilman Kurtz, you had a comment.
Two things, I think that that's one of the things we probably need to find out, too, is the legitimate ability to sell the building, because I think that we're counting on that for um revenue to fund whatever a potential project would be, that's um, we don't want to skip all that, so. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, too, but um Mayor Protem, you had put up a picture of the, I think, the Wenatchee Market on the inside. And I think that as we're talking about a community center, um I don't know that it has to be in the same spot as the library. I think if you're thinking about someplace to have like a father-daughter dance and you've got a really big building like that, perhaps there's a way to design something that has like a stall, if that's what the community wants stalls um to incubate um a marketplace, but then also has a massive, big, open area, too, that where the big event type things can happen. It doesn't have to be in where the books are, the library part. But those are all things for a later day. But I think we gotta figure out if if this is something we actually want to go forward with and how we do that.
If I had also, is that from the survey, is one thing that I recall that it pointed out, is that the benefit of tying a community center where the growth of the libraries are going with the library is it cuts down the expense by combining it together. Not having one facility over here, we have to man that with employees, another one over here. Some of the libraries that we went to, even in the city, because we took the committee and we went to every library that was in the area. The ones that seemed the most successful, the ones we felt are most successful, were the ones where they had, quote, a community center and meeting rooms with the library. And it didn't have to have as many staff as they had before. Uh from a council standpoint, I would like to interject that I think because of time would be of the es- essence to put this uh on the next council meeting for a uh discussion again. Because certainly from tonight on, over the next two weeks, we're gonna have a lot of citizens with input. We have a lot of citizens who put a lot of time and effort into this. And I don't want, I don't want them to feel that their voices haven't been heard. I think they've been heard loud and clear, at least for me that I've heard, is that when I keep hearing this is what the citizens want, this is what they've spoken, that I'm paying attention by, let's see what the citizens want. For me, it it would go to a vote. Council? Councilman, Mayor Protem Carpegill, anything else?
Uh Mark, do you need um any instruction from us going forward, or can we just go ahead and add this to the February seven, is it seventeen, meeting?
It could be the eighteenth. I I would, I would respectfully request that you may consider a a meeting beyond that. And the reason I say that is because we're we're bringing you the results of the facility master plan on the eighteenth.
Oh, okay.
And 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 you're gonna get all kinds of doses of options of things that you previously directed us to do. And 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 I think this might cloud those results.
So maybe the March fourth meeting?
Sure.
Councilman Kurtz.
I know we have the Strategic Investment Plan Workshop, which ties probably into funding and things. I'm wondering if that would be something wo- that would match, and maybe we would have a longer workshop to talk about those things, or are the topics too different and divergent?
They are very related. Uh the the workshop is not specifically designed to get consensus on a individual project, but but with respect to the, all of these things that we've been talking about, not only in this meeting, but other discussions on the same topic, it it is very closely related. So there there could easily be um a conversation at that workshop that dealt with this specific topic. If we just carve that into the agenda, the concern that I would have is that takes away time if if and and if we don't have a lot of it already, we have less of it if we wait until the end of March.
So I think that if we're gonna talk about this project, I would prefer, based on our past history, to have a special meeting that is solely dedicated to the library, community center, whatever it's gonna be on and off Tuesday, versus trying to have a workshop in and amongst all the other things that we have going on. I think that if we're gonna, if we're going to do the work, we need to actually focus on one thing and work the whole thing through and and have the community there for that one topic, the people that want to engage in that. Um perhaps if there's some part of a town hall to it, so we can get some feedback and really market that at some point. Um but I think it makes sense to um not have it on so many agendas versus having a big chunk of time to handle it once.
Yes, Councilman Ball.
Um I was just gonna say, I would concur. This needs to be discussed in depth in, by itself, animating. Please.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I would say if we're gonna hear back uh on the eighteenth, on all the other stuff you guys have been working on, perhaps on the twenty-fifth, the next Tuesday. If we had a special meeting, we could uh have, we'd have a week to digest what we heard on the eighteenth and have an in-depth conversation on the eighteenth or on the twenty-fifth.
And ultimately, that's council's decision, but sure, we can obviously make that happen.
I, for one, would be in favor of that. When I say as time is of the essence, if anything, I would hate to see is that this gets stalled, or if this idea is going to work, let's either take care of it or get rid of it soon. What I don't want to do is stretch on for all, just to have another committee to have a committee. I think we've had so many committees, we know what we want. The biggest challenge was that we didn't have the money. I did want to point out is that in two thousand sixteen, one, another reason why I think added to the failure of that is that we were in the process of, we're gonna do a trailhead. We knew we had to do something there and we didn't have the money. Didn't have the money. So it came down to, do we wanna have a community center and library, or we're gonna have to take care of something we already have, and that took the priority. Any other council comments?
Oh, I just, um if we are contemplating a twenty-fifth meeting, I think it's important that everybody be here. Everybody.
Is it, is that the council's pleasure?
Definitely for me. I don't have my work calendar, I have no, it sounds good.
Somebody wanna propose?
Make a motion, Councilmember Kennedy, to hold a special meeting at seven PM on February twenty-fifth regarding uh library slash town square project.
Second?
Can I motion, well, I can motion. Can we do six? So it's earlier?
Can we what?
Do six o'clock?
Oh, love it.
Just so that we have more time and we're not out so late. I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, but. Okay. So I'll make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to start the meeting at six.
Do a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the motion to start the meeting at six. All those, all those in?
Mike, 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 hang on a second. I'm sorry, I I wanted to make sure, was there a second on Chris's original motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All those in favor of have it starting at six o'clock, please indicate. Yes or no? Yes?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good. Now we move on to the original motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean.
No, that's correct.
That is, we have the meeting, which will start at six o'clock on the twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth or? It is twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
All those in favor, or I should say, any discussion?
As an alternate Tuesday, correct?
No further discussion. All those in favor indicate, yes?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Councilmember Kennedy, one thing that we didn't um make a motion on is how long that meeting would be. Um so we need to decide whether it's gonna be two hours, whether it's gonna be ninety minutes. Uh just keep in mind that we can't go past uh whatever we say it's going to be.
Uh Councilman Kurtz?
I would suggest three hours.
Councilman Ball?
Oh, I would second that here if we're making a motion.
I I would agree with that, because we can always finish early.
Yeah.
Let's pray. Very good.
Do we need to have a?
Is that a?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the meeting lasts three hours.
Second?
Second.
Very good. The motion that the meeting lasts for three hours or less. All those in favor indicate by?
Oh, I thought we did that already.
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Therefore, we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, starting at six o'clock, could run no more than three hours. If that's all that we have on that, we could move on. Very good. Next on the agenda of workshop discussion is City Council Rules of Procedure. Councilman Kurtz.
All right. So we get to experience two council members' PowerPoints in one night. It's gonna be awesome. Um so um I think you guys know that we had the, an ad hoc committee, so Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Spencer and I um are looking through the rules of procedure to suggest any changes. So this is sort of your first opportunity to look at some of the things that we've talked about. We do not have red lines, we're not going through that, we will at some point. But the purpose of tonight is to, if you want to go to the next slide, please. Um the purpose of tonight is to share kind of what we've talked about so far. Um and like I just mentioned, a red line draft at the ordinance will be presented. We'll um look at having a workshop to talk about that in the future. Just a reminder that the council has the final say on whether we make any changes. And so again, tonight is to prompt some dialogue, put some things in your your head to think about between now and when when we go into that detailed red line workshop. Um and to give us some initial feedback to see if we're sort of headed in the right direction. Next slide, please. Okay, um so the thing that we, the three of us talked about, and please, um Councilmember Spencer and Councilmember Kennedy, if you guys have anything you guys want to add, please do that along the way. Um but things that we're looking to increase, the first one we've talked about before, efficiency of meetings. Um so some of the things that we've talked about a little bit is using Robert's Rules of Order a little bit more. More, a little bit more than what we have now, um getting a little bit more precise about that. Focusing on the intentional timing of the meetings and decreasing time spent in meetings. We also want to increase the effi- efficiency of the city council and city staff, so we're um you're gonna see us propose the idea, which we talked about before, um the city staff has presented this to us, an earlier meeting start time. We've also got some ideas about how to reduce some reporting requirements, and so we want to get the feedback of the people that do those reports for us to see if that will work for them and if it works for city business. Um and then also how we engage with our citizens in the meetings. So how can we have clear guidance on how and when to engage in meetings? And then also talk about um a meeting time that supports and encourages citizen attendance. Jed and Mike, any other thoughts you guys want to add to that? All right. So next slide, please. Um so we talked a little bit about um Robert's Rules of Order, and one of the things that the three of us talked about was um the ability for us all to be trained, retrained um on Robert's Rules of Order uh for city council. Um and then some specific training on points of order. Uh the three of us agreed that we don't want to use points of order as a punitive measure in a meeting, as a way to dig at somebody, um but using it as a procedure to help us get back on track, because we've gotten off track um a lot. I think all of us have. Um and we've started using points of order, um and I think we could be a little bit better about how we use them um and more precise in in helping us um keep the meetings back on track. Uh next slide, please. So this is sometimes how I feel at the end of meetings. Um we want to make sure that we are engaging with everybody, um and one of the ways to do that is to think about the timing of our meetings. So I think one of the the goals that we talked about is we want our city staff and our council members to have plenty of time to discuss the issues, ask all of our questions, get all of our information gathered, be at our best to make decisions, and then um reduce the uncertainty of meeting length. Um so my personal opinion is that city business discussed after ten o'clock can sometimes not be our best decision time. Um it also lessens the likelihood that citizens can attend. Next slide, please. So length of meetings, um Kelsey and Mark put together how often um we met during these time blocks. So how often our meetings were completed between eight and nine PM, which was twenty-five percent of the time, between nine and ten, which was fifty percent of the time, and that hour between ten and eleven where we had to extend the meeting was twenty-five percent of the time. So for the past twenty-four months, our meetings have ended after ten o'clock twenty-five percent of the time, which I, which felt a little different to me. I I I was surprised that we had a quarter of them that ended between eight and nine and a quarter of them ended late, so I think actually having um the data um gives a little bit of perspective to that. Next slide, please. So if we didn't do anything else um besides look at moving our meetings to start at six o'clock, potentially, if everything stayed the same, seventy percent of our city council meetings could be done by nine o'clock. I think, which in my perspective, would be a better way for us to be doing um getting things done earlier. Um and then allowing our city staff, our department directors, and everybody who attends the meetings, and our citizens to be home earlier at night. So our efficiency ideas, that's the next slide. The first one is proposing starting our city council meetings at six o'clock. So we would talk about having focused workshops, uh just like we did with the other topic that we had, um be done as a special meeting on off weeks, if we needed to have a real concentrated discussion about something. And then all of the other workshops would just be included in the meeting agenda. So um we talked a little bit about when we have, sometimes we have workshops at six o'clock, and then there's, you know, twenty minutes that we could be doing something else, but we can't start a meeting until seven. This would give us the ability to just c- continue with the city business. Uh the other thing that we talked about when we're talk about, talking about balancing um our time and the efficiency of meetings was considering whether reducing the citizen comment per person time to two minutes per person um to encourage some concise and focused messages that the citizens can c- communicate to us. And then also some other cities and some other uh boards and commissions um have a limit on the first citizen comment period to thirty minutes. So I think we want to hear from the citizens about what they think about that. Um we want to hear from everybody else about that, so that's the reason why we're putting some of these ideas forward so that we can hear from everybody, so that when we actually do make the red lines for uh the rules of procedure, that we can make the right edits for that. Next slide, please. So a couple other ways, we were looking at increasing efficiency, adjusting the flow of the agenda, and then reducing reporting requirements. Next slide. So these are a couple of the proposed um agenda adjustments. So the first one is links to directors' reports on the agenda, so the public can see the reports. Um the city administrators report agenda items being listed on the published agenda, so the citizens can see what the city administrator is gonna report on. Uh moving the consent agenda to earlier in the meeting. By each um agenda item having uh an estimated timeframe, so like for this presentation, you know, maybe putting twenty minutes on. Um or for Mayor Protem's presentation that he did, um trying to account for some of the discussion, putting a a timeframe on there so that citizens can um and us can kind of have an idea of when they, um when things, how long things are gonna be. The next one was adding proposed presentations to upcoming agenda items. And part of this was um Um, and part of this was, um, we're talking about what, what we want to talk about at the next meeting. Also having a chance to weigh in on any other presentations that are being, um, put forward for us to consider in the future. And then adding a page to the agenda or online, um, or even up on the screens. Um, to inform participants of rules of how to engage, when to engage and the purpose of the agenda topic. So I think that there's a lot of different agendas that I've looked at where, um, the agenda itself has what's, what a pro- what a proclamation can be. Um, has the information about citizen comments that the mayor actually usually says, but just so that they can read it and see it. Next slide, please. Um, so these are some of our ideas for reducing reporting requirements. And down at the bottom, it says we want to get input from the department directors. Um, folks like the Liberty Lake Suren Water District and Spokane Valley Fire District on whether this is a good idea from their perspective or not. Um, but looking at having boards and commissions rotate. So, um, planning commission would be this month, next month, or the next meeting, I guess. The next meeting would be, um, community engagement, the next one would be parks and arts, and then just having them rotate through. So we hear from one at each meeting, so we don't have to have as many of them here, um, unless they want to be here. Uh, department reports, um, considering having department heads submit those to us quarterly. And then for Liberty Lake Suren Water and Spokane Valley Fire District, having them attend potentially quarterly. In, in part to reduce the amount of time that they, um, have to attend meetings and, and be here as well. So definitely want to get some feedback on that. And then, next slide, please. Um, so we want to talk about how to, think about how to improve the, the user experience, so the citizens' experience. Um, so a couple of the ideas that we talked about were bringing back, um, voting on screen, the, where we had the Xs and checks. Um, we liked that and I think it was a good visual, um, for us, but then also for people sitting in the audience and people who are watching the meeting later. Uh, we had a couple of ideas about how to update the request to speak process. Um, Central Valley School District has an electronic signup, um, that you sign up on the website before the meeting. Um, so if we did something like that and/or, um, if you can still do the, um, sign up for a meeting here. Including whether someone is for, against, or neutral on a particular topic. And then, um, other cities have, actually have a link to see the citizen comments that have come in. So if I'm looking at an agenda for tonight, I would see all the citizen comments that have come in and I could read them and see who they were from. Um, which I think would increase transparency and also reduce the public disclosure requests, um, some of them anyway. Um, we talked a little bit about how to, uh, that we'd like to have timestamps on the uploaded city council meetings to match the agenda topics. So if I wanna, um, hear Mayor Pro Tem's, uh, presentation on, uh, the library, I can just go skip right to it versus having to like scroll and listen and scroll and listen. Um, and then we also talked about, we do have media coming, um, and they're usually, there's, it's, depends on who's here, how experienced they are. But having an identified, um, and designated media location and chambers, a place that they can, they know that they go there. Here are some of the rules, like we don't ask people for interviews while somebody else is talking. Some basic sort of etiquette that we expect to make sure that our meeting is not, um, disrupted. Right, um. So. I have a couple of slides left, um, next slide, please. So I think one of the things that we could do to make a difference is sort of gauge where you guys are at with, um, considering starting the meeting at six o'clock for the next two meetings. And the reason that I suggest this, um, or bringing this forward is that before we write something into the rules of procedure and put it in an ordinance, I think we want to try it and see if it works for us first. Um, so I'm interested to hear, um, from you guys. One about that particular topic and then I just spewed out thirteen slides of stuff. Um, so the next slides are, if you want to go to the next slide, um. These are, do you guys have any high level questions, initial reactions, um, big concerns? Are we on the right track? Are we off track? And so I'm just opening it for you guys to talk.
I'd like to open it up to Councilman Ball, Van Ormen and Cargill because you, you didn't have the advantage of the stellar meetings that we had to hash all this out. And none of them were catered. I just want to point that out. You tried, but it didn't happen. Councilman Ball, I believe you had your hand up first.
Okay, so, um, if we, you said, uh, the next two meetings, but you had on your slide.
Two months.
Months, okay. So, um, would we then be doing, uh, the focus workshops on off weeks and shorter workshops during the meeting in this test period?
Yeah, I think that, um, if we needed to have, um, longer focus workshops like the, the library thing, that would be one. Um, but unless we had something we felt like we needed a specific couple of hours to versus, you know, workshops here are usually, you know, half an hour depending, sometimes they're shorter. Those would just be in the meeting itself.
Okay, and then I guess the only, um, other thing that kind of jumped out at me. I, I, I really am not in favor of reducing citizen comment to two minutes. I just don't think that gives folks enough to express what they want to say. And, um, I don't know about the thirty minute thing either, maybe forty-five?
Okay.
Yeah, versus some comment, um, yeah, I, I just feel that the people have, they need the time to speak. And so.
Well, I for one, uh, thank you for all three of you really delving into it. Um, it was a long time coming. Uh, I agree on some points. I, I do see that we need to kind of streamline because many of us have a tendency to say the same thing. And you've got quite a few citizens saying exactly the same thing. I see where they kind of put the pros and the cons. But that's something that we can work out. But good, all the way through, uh, like the idea of, of working from six o'clock for the workshop and on with the meeting, just like we did or are doing tonight.
So the meet, like the actual business meeting would start at six. Yeah.
It would actually start at six.
Six o'clock. So we'd have to, to do this, we would need to suspend the rules of procedure that are currently in place in order to start the next two months' meetings at six o'clock. And so similar to tonight's agenda for the regular meeting, there would be, there'd be workshops in there, but we wouldn't have a six o'clock workshop session. We would start the regular meeting at six.
Okay.
Councilman Cargill, I see you have your hand up.
Well, first of all, I was just gonna say that this, uh, PowerPoint is much better than my PowerPoint. So, uh, I, I think that's important to point out. Uh, second, uh, I, I am totally fine with the idea of starting the meeting at six o'clock. I think that's, that's perfect. My only, uh, hope is that it doesn't just provide us another hour to keep talking about things, you know? So I feel like if we're gonna start it at six o'clock, we have the aim to be done by nine. And then maybe we have to do the same rule that we do now where, uh, we're past ten. You know, we have to keep extending the meeting and voting on extending the meeting. So that's just one thing to, to think about. Um, I, I do like the idea of putting business before the reports. I know that the, I know that the, the downside to that is that then the people who are making the reports are, have to sit around the entire night. But, um, but I think it's more important to have the business done before we get into the city council reports or the mayor's report or the city administrator report. It's not that all those reports aren't important, it's just that for the sake of the citizens who are there, you know, to hear us vote on one thing or another. Uh, it would probably be best to have those reports later on, uh, in the, in the agenda. Um, I also think that, you know, if, if we can't get a system set up where we can get the votes on screen. Um, I do think we need to figure out a different way then to make sure that citizens are knowing how the votes went down, if they're watching. And so one idea that I had, uh, mentioned before is doing voice votes. And, and that takes a little bit of extra time, um, but I think it's important to let citizens know. Uh, instead of just this wide angle shot that I'm looking at right now, uh, where it might be difficult to tell who's raising their hand or who's not raising their hand. Uh, if, if we do it by voice, uh, in lieu of not having anything on the, on the screen, that might be a better, uh, better way to do it as well. And then I will just mention on citizen concept, uh, uh, comment, I, I, you know, I, I struggle with this because I don't want to reduce citizen comment time, uh, either. But my one caveat to that is that, as, as we all know, some citizens comment on the first half of the meeting and then after, you know, at the end of the meeting, they comment and it's basically the same comment they, that they made at the first half of the meeting. So what we could do is just say, look, you know, we're gonna keep the citizen comment at, at three minutes. But if you've already commented once in the meeting, your second comment is a little bit shorter. So that way it gives other citizens the opportunity to, to come and still take their time if they want to take four or five minutes total. But maybe what we say is three minutes for your first comment and then two minutes for your second one. Uh, and five minutes out of a meeting, uh, is, is, that's, that's a pretty good amount of time. I mean, other, other organizations only do one minute. So, um, I don't think it's that unreasonable to say if you've already commented once, you don't get another full three minutes, uh, and take the place of any other citizen who might want to comment. So those are my thoughts.
Any other comments from the council? Yes, Councilball?
Yeah, I just thought something else. So on, um, the reports from like, like for example, the fire department, you said that would be monthly?
Quarterly.
Oh, quarterly.
So we would, we would see, um, fire chief here every three months. Three months, yeah.
But we would receive the reports.
We could receive the written reports, yeah. So like with, and then with the directors too. And this is why we need feedback from the directors and then from you guys about how often you want to read the, you know, read the reports, how often you have questions. But the ability for department directors to not have to prepare those for us except for quarterly.
So, but we would get their feedback as well. I mean, for, I've just seen.
Yes, we need their feedback. Maybe they want to come every month. I don't know.
Well, yeah, I mean, if like Soto says, I want to come every month, you know, we can't stop him, you know, so. Okay, yeah, okay.
We just locked it or?
Yeah, bust us with fire codes.
We start a little fire outside. There another.
I just used him as an example.
Another question, comments from the council on this. Uh, Councilman Kurtz did make a very good point is that if we could try a trial, let's say for the next two months, starting at six o'clock. So I assume that's because that's a change in our process now that was, I assume, Sean, that would take a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Um, right, I want to ask Kelsey, would you prefer to change, um, relative to just doing a notice of change for each time of the meeting, like we've done at different times when meetings have started at different times? And putting out a notice that way, or how, how are you gonna handle procedurally on your end?
I would envision posting a notice for a change of start time since the regular office will start earlier.
Okay, and that's what I was envisioning as well. So, um, I think all the council would have to do is make a motion that they want meetings between date A and date B, whatever that time period is for two months, to begin at six, six P M. rather than seven P M. You pass that motion and then procedurally, Kelsey will just note it as a change of time, um, for each of those particular meetings when they arise.
Councilmember, like to make that motion?
Yes, um, I would like to make a motion that the city council meetings between February eighteenth through April thirtieth begin at six P M. and end at nine P M.
There's a second? Revote, all those in favor indicate? Didn't I say a second?
Discussion.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, discussion. No discussion?
Real, real quick, uh, so was the plan two months or two meetings? I'm sorry.
Two months.
Oh, two months, okay, thank you.
No further discussion? All those in favor indicate?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Very good. Is that the end of your presentation?
Um, I had one last slide and it's just the next steps. Um, so we will, um, check in on the feedback that you guys gave tonight. Um, and then eventually we'll get a draft sent to Mark and Sean for city staff review, um, for Sean's, um, legal input. Um, and then refinement of the red lines because we don't want to have a super marked up red line if we move forward. We'll want to have a workshop so we can go through those red lines at some point. Um, and then go through each individual thing and, and vote on those. And then, um, once the changes are voted on, I will follow the process outline to approve it as an ordinance, an amendment to the ordinance. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, um. And thank you especially for the three individuals that participated in that because all three of them did just a fine, fine job. Moving on to, uh, general business consent agenda. There are a motion to approve A through F?
I'll make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E and F.
Second.
Second, who's second? Councilman Kurtz, thank you for second. All those in favor of approving general business A, B, C, D, E and F, please indicate. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? See, you almost got me.
But no discussion on these ones.
It's a agenda, Mike, so you're good.
Well, thank you for that. Can I have that in writing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passed unanimously, thank you. We, uh, number, item number eleven, general business, we have no action items. Counsel comments? You gotta be kidding me.
I'll make one.
Very good. Councilman Van Ormen.
We have an upcoming, uh, lodging tax committee coming next Tuesday. So anyone that would like to attend, it begins at eleven o'clock here in council chambers.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Cargill, do you have anything?
I do not.
Well, what do you know? Public carrying's appealed. We have none. Resolutions, number fourteen.
Resolution number twenty-five dash two seven two. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting an updated commute trip reduction, or C T R, plan.
Councilmember Kennedy, I will, um, make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash two seven two.
Seconded by Councilman Dan Orman. Discussion?
Great program.
Pardon?
Great program.
Very good program. Hearing no discussion, then we'll vote, vote on that.
You need citizen comment opportunity.
Citizen comments, public comment, very good. Uh, we will open that at what do you want to say, eight forty-one?
You don't have to, it's not a public carry, Mike, so you can just take comment as it comes.
Okay, very good. Any comments from the, uh, citizens?
David Taylor, Liberty Lake. First off, I just want to.
Naming you our resident?
Yes, I am, Liberty Lake. Yeah, thank you. I want to applaud, applaud the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem on his, uh, his, uh, plan. I think.
Point of order, it's got, the citizen comments are on the resolution, not the citizen comments generally just yet.
Are you commenting on the resolution, Dave? Okay.
Yeah. That's right.
So if, if I can make a quick comment.
Absolutely.
Uh, this, this is a program, as Councilmember Van Ormen said, it's a great program. I just wanted to point out the fact that as, as an employer who's covered by this program, uh, the city is on, I believe it's the twelfth of February, there, there's an awards ceremony that's associated with this. And so the city's participation in this program has grown to the point that over the last two years, we've gone from no recognition to the bronze level to this year, the silver level. And so that's a testament mostly to not only the individual employees who are trying different things with respect to their commute, but Tate Garcia is our coordinator of this program and she has done yeoman's work to get the word out. Try some different incentive, uh, incentives for getting people to, uh, consider this, log their results. All of the stuff that boosted us from no recognition to bronze to silver. So I just wanted to point that out. It's, uh, it's, it's Tate's work that has helped us get to the civil, silver level of recognition.
I believe in the past, there have been awards, uh, luncheon, hasn't there been?
Yes, and that's, uh, next week. I think it's the twelfth, yeah.
Very good.
So the other, oh, the other comment that I'd make is the fact that, uh, these are for businesses that have a hundred employees or more. And it definitely throughout these years has taken down the traffic for finding alternate carpooling, bus for, through S T A and so forth. It's been phenomenal. Um, so kudos to all of the large.
So kudos to all of the large industries that we have here in Liberty Lake for doing this.
Very good. No further comments? Move to item number 15 ordinances, first read ordinance?
We need to vote.
Mike, you got to vote.
I'm sorry. Well, that, that's a novel idea. All those in favor of resolution number 25-272?
Don't we have to close the public hearing? Oh, okay. All right.
I tried to open it. They said it wasn't necessary. So.
Oh.
But thank you for pointing that out. We're passing resolution number 25-272. Please indicate.
I.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Very good. Now we can move on to item number 15, ordinances, first read.
Ordinance number 309, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending City of Liberty Lake Development Code and River District Development Regulations Regarding Limited Use Standards for Emergency Housing and Shelter.
Okay. Very good. Item number 16, emergency ordinances. We have none. Seventeen, introduction of upcoming agenda items. Council, have any comments and stuff on, on these coming up?
Councilmember Kennedy, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe at the next meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to be discussing the, oh, now it's slipped my mind.
Commission, commission process?
Yes, thank you. The commission appointment process. Thank you very much. And I have the presentation ready for that as well. A better PowerPoint than tonight.
We're going to grade you on a sliding scale. Any other comments? Oh, yes, Councilman Ball.
It says on here tentative for that one because the mayor and Mark are going to be out of town.
Actually, you're going to be out of town. You'll be here for that meeting, right?
I'm sorry, which meeting?
The 18th.
So the mayor and I will be joining the meeting remotely from.
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Do you have any additions or anything to the upcoming agendas?
Not other than the ones we've already discussed.
Okay. Having seen nothing other questions from the council?
Wait, I'm sorry. Councilmember Cargill had the February 18th for code enforcement items in streets. Is that, will that be on the agenda? It's down towards the bottom.
Oh.
So we talked about that this morning. Lisa, are we ready to, she's nodding, so yes.
So we're okay there. Okay, very good. Takes care of 17 now up to citizen comments. For anybody who would like to come forward and speak for citizens, you have three minutes. If you feel about one of these, please turn it in to Kelsey.
Okay, sorry, I didn't pay attention earlier.
First we have is David Clay.
From Liberty Lake. So as I was stating, I want to applaud the Mayor Protemp from the option. So as a resident of Liberty Lake, I don't have kids, I have grandkids. We already have a library, but that idea of having a community center as well as a market for everyone in the community, I think is great. But I also have to agree with, with Councilman Spencer. Going in debt for something really has to take some serious consideration. What are we going to do with the current library once you build a new one? Yes, you'll sell legacy, the legacy church building. What about the existing library? Could that be used for a community center? Just a thought. It'll be an open building once you build a new library. So things for the community center. I also work with Katie Ferris in the, in the Sheriff's Scope Program. So we just finished a rodeo, bicycle rodeo at Conhos Elementary. Phenomenal. Spokane Valley Fire Department hosted it. We actually gave a fourth and fifth grader bike rodeo safety class. We also repair bikes and donate them to people who need them. A community center would give us the venue to have bike rodeo safety classes, additional police department classes where you run out of room. The, we're now going like the Scope Program, going to first aid classes down in Spokane because we have no place here. And they're very limited on the space. So right now, the Scope Program for Liberty Lake, which is what I'm dedicated to support, we have no office. We're, we're in the police department in the back where no citizens and no community members can come and talk to Scope members. So having a community center office like that would be phenomenal. Have you ever been to Spokane Valley Mall and look at their Scope Program? Office, it's phenomenal. It looks like a museum. Okay, so the community could come and visit Scope as well as maybe a health and wellness office where seniors, anyone else can go and get their blood pressure test, tested or talk to somebody about health issues. Maybe have a police liaison in that community center who could do that as well. Just some things to think about as a resident, wholly on board with this concept. One thing I would be concerned about is parking, traffic. A study for that would have to be in place. That public market would draw a lot of parking. So just something to think about that. And then Robert's rules, definitely as a retired military person here, you can't, you can't get enough of understanding Robert's rules and, and yes, I totally applaud coming earlier. All right. Because like you said, it gets late. Now, last thing, I'd just like that, all of you offer tomorrow a meeting and this is, goes back to the secondhand smoke issue workshop. I just need to know when you want to have that workshop so I can get Kelsey all the read ahead materials for you. I'm meeting with a lawyer tomorrow from the state's American Pronunciation Rights Foundation. She has questions about the legality issues of the ordinance. I've already explained to her, I've already worked with the chief and the deputy and they've already seen the ordinance and the enforcement. And they want to take it to the state level.
Excuse me, Mr. Clay, your three minutes is up. So thank you for coming forward.
Yes, obviously. So I'll get everything to Kelsey if you need anything else. Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any other citizens who'd like to speak? I would certainly encourage anybody who's heard something tonight they want to make a comment to. Please come forward. We'd love to hear from you. Okay. Having heard, no others, anybody online? Evan? Very good. We have no executive session. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's done. Thank you.